All right. Welcome, everybody. Today is Monday, September 16th, and it is 3:30 PM. And this is a commission work session for the Port of Olympia. And I will call this meeting to order. And we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? There are none. I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving today's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. So let's just jump right into it. The first item on today's work session agenda is the climate change and regional clean energy needs. And it looks like Camille and Sean and Christine are all here to share some measurements.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Camille Saint-Ante, as you know, but for those joining remotely, I'm the Director of Strategic Communications Affairs. Joining me today is my colleague, Sean Gilbertson, the Director of Environmental Planning. You're also joining us today is Christine Rompa and Beth Gilbertson, who are Puget Sound Energy experts. Today, we're going to be talking about climate change and regional clean energy needs. We're going to begin with looking at Washington's goals and progress on our greenhouse gases. And an overview of Thurston County's greenhouse gases. We'll take a look at the port's actions on climate change, and then we're going to turn it over to the Puget Sound Energy team. And they're going to talk about the clean energy demands in the region and opportunities for the port. For your awareness and the public's awareness, this, we all know that this is a critical, important issue, climate change. It is the environmental issue of our lifetime, and it's, I appreciate you asking to be focusing on the energy needs in the region. This isn't working, Missy. Do you mind just clicking on the screen and activating it? Okay, very good. So for those joining remotely and those in the room, if you're not aware, these are the state's greenhouse gas statutory limits. And the goal is by 2050 to reach 95% below 1990 levels to reach net zero emissions. And this target was set to limit the most extreme effects of climate change. So 19, you can see on the left-hand side of your screen, in 1990, our state had a 93.5 million metric ton baseline of greenhouse gas emissions. And fast forward to 2019, this is the latest information available from the Department of Ecology. And we have, we were emitting 102.1 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent. And the goal is to get to 95% below 1990 levels, and that's a significant drop that we need to make. If you're curious about what our state emission sources made up of, a huge chunk is transportation. But looking at electricity and residential, commercial, industrial heating, there's significant opportunity as well. How are we going to get there? This is the big seven, according to Washington State. And it's the seven policies put in place intended to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions as a state. Beginning with the Clean Energy Transformation Act. And moving down to hydro, fluor, carbons, cap and invest, clean fuels, buildings, clean vehicles, building performance standards. Washington State has taken action on climate initiatives and is a leader across the country. So in order to get there, we're, that Washington's Clean Energy Transformation Act, which some of you are very familiar with, is a significant part of, of the plan. And our guests today are going to be diving into that more specifically, but I wanted to call this out because this is an important sector of our greenhouse gas emissions. So as promised at the beginning, we're going to take a look at Thurston County's goals. And 85% below 2015 levels is the goal for Thurston County, and we want to reach that level by 2050. Right now, our county is at 2.9 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent. And by 2050, which there's, you know, that's a ways out, the, the idea would be, would get down to around 500,000 metric tons. Here is the county's greenhouse gas inventory. Building and energy makes up a significant portion of this portfolio at 54.3% in Thurston County and transportation coming in behind that. So you can see there is a lot of opportunity in buildings and energy. Within that sector, residential is nearly 60%, but there is opportunity in the commercial at 36%. A smidge in industrial at 3.8 and just a scant amount in street lighting at 0.3%. All right, that concludes my overview to kind of set the stage of where we're at as a state and as a county. And I'm going to turn this over to Sean Gilbertson now. Give this to Ron. You're very welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. Sean Gilbertson, Director of Environmental Planning and Programs. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what the port's already doing, its initiatives and activities for climate change resiliency and energy efforts. So we have some big picture items that we're working on, that we've worked on over the last five years. One of those is by resolution, the port signed on to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, which lays out a strategy for the, for the county to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. More clean energy use, energy usage. We've done our own port greenhouse gas inventory, emissions inventory as well. The last one that was done was 2019. We'll be working to update that. We're also part of the Olympia Sea Level Rise Collaborative Effort, which is by inter-local agreement with LOT and the City of Olympia. And then we've also come up with an Olympia Sea Level Rise Response Plan, which was a joint effort through the Sea Level Rise Collaborative. So those are some of the overarching efforts that we have ongoing. Some of the specific actions that we've taken at the port include installation of electric vehicle charging stations at, at the farmer's market. We have four outlets there, two units with two each for charging four vehicles at a time. We also have electric vehicle charging stations coming to Olympia Regional Airport soon. Port has purchased one electric vehicle, service vehicle already, and via grant, we're going to be purchasing two more for the airport coming up soon. Those charging stations will come in handy. As well, we're piloting an FAA program right now, which is testing solar on the airport. Make sure that it provides the energy sufficient to power critical infrastructure like airport lighting. Those are efforts that we want to build off of. And then forthcoming efforts, we are, currently, we have a grant agreement with the Department of Commerce right now. We're going to be assessing fleet electrification analysis, so we'll be looking at our entire vehicle fleet for, and determining replacement order and how we can do that in a way that converts to electric vehicles and therefore reduces our carbon emissions. We're also doing a solar potential assessment, so we'll be looking at the potential to put solar at different areas of the port. Improve clean energy production. And then we'll, we'll also, as part of those analyses, do a battery and shore power potential study to see what the potential is for us to have backup power at the Marine Terminal. That could be used as both emergency backup power and potentially shore power at some point. And then, of course, we're partnering with Puget Sound Energy to see what they can do to help us out in these efforts. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to PSC and PSC.
I have a lot more slides just preparing for this.
Thank you.
What's the magic button?
There you go.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner. Good evening, afternoon, Commissioners. Christine Rompa, Puget Sound Energy Local Government Affairs Room. I'm going to talk about challenges and opportunities that we face as we transition to the clean energy future. So PSC is the oldest and largest utility in Washington State. We have about 1.5 million electric customers, 900,000 natural gas customers. We are undergoing, as everyone knows, the most significant transformation that we have seen in our 150-year history. We've got to meet Washington State's clean energy law goals. Their big goal is 2030, what's one of our first goals, and then 2045 is another big goal, and we'll talk about that. All while trying to deliver on our customers' expectations for energy that is clean, reliable, and affordable. So as Camille kind of alluded to, we've had a lot of legislation pass in 2019. These are some of the bills that have passed. The most impactful, Puget Sound Energy, is the Clean Energy Transformation Act that passed in 2019. And that deals with our electricity supply. It requires PSC and other utilities to no longer generate electricity by the use of coal. We have to be out of that by the end of 2025. It also requires us to have a neutral electric supply by 2030 and 100% renewable electricity by 2045. Another impactful legislation that passed is the Climate Commitment Act that imposes a carbon tax on greenhouse gas emissions. The legislation does originally provide for an offset to that tax, but as the years go on, the offset decreases. It's incentivizing folks to switch from electricity to natural gas. There are some other bills that have passed as well that are impactful to all of us, but those are the two that pertain to PSC significantly. So we want to be more aspirational than just meeting the state goals. And so these are some of our aspirational goals that PSC has, but I really want to focus on the beyond net zero component of those goals. So not only do we want to reduce energy and carbon and get greenhouse gas emissions for ourselves, our company, how we generate electricity, how we purchase it. We want to help other industries and sectors do that as well, especially transportation, manufacturing, et cetera. So while we are trying to meet our goals, we also want to be a resource for other industries. So how are we doing? We are making progress. By the end of 2025, we are going to be closing down our coal strip mine in Montana. And also TransAlta will no longer be providing coal energy for us. So we will be out of the coal industry on December 31st, 2025. In 2023, 48% of our electricity came from non-emitting resources. So we are getting there. We used to have a lot more of natural gas and coal use, and we are weaning ourselves off of those resources. Since the Clean Energy Transformation Act passed in 2019, we have brought in or procured more than 35,000 megawatts of renewable energy resources. And I will show you at the end of the slide, a list of some of the projects that we've actually done. I put it at the end just in case I run out of time, but we'll see how that goes. Bottom line is we are aggressively pursuing renewable energy resources to meet our goals. So here are some really big challenges that we face on the way to our clean energy transformation. The scale and the pace is very, very challenging. Scale being how much we have to acquire and pace being how quickly we have to acquire these. The demand for electricity is increasing. The feds are incentivizing electrification. The state is incentivizing electrification, and so that puts more electric load on the system. So we're going to see it increase significantly. EVs are going to play a big part of that required or electricity load in the future. One of our biggest challenges is that we really don't have anything to replace natural gas in the system right now. We have renewable natural gas, which is very expensive, and we also have potential to use hydrogen. But again, those technologies are very expensive. There's nothing right now that can replace natural gas on the systems. They're just not commercially viable yet. What we do have is wind and solar. And these are called variable energy sources. They're not as reliable as coal and natural gas. They're hard to dispatch. Coal and natural gas can come on in like four minutes. We can fire up the plant and get electricity going, and we can shut them down quickly. That's called dispatchable resource. Wind and solar are not. When the wind's not blowing or the sun's not shining, right? I got those right. I said wind not shining the other day. There is no power. So we've got some issues with our renewable resources to date. Another big issue for us is the electric grid. It's old. And if we want more electricity, we are going to need to build more transmission lines. That gets into very heavy costs with all that construction. That also gets into community issues. There's a lot of community issues, communities that don't want transmission or distribution lines in their area. We, there's a lot of folks who don't want us to cut down trees to bring the lines over. There are just a lot of issues around building more transmission lines. So, and, and the feds, it's very, it takes a lot of time to get a permit approved at the federal level for these kind of big projects. But it needs to get done. But you can see the tension. There's tension between these goals that are right around the corner, 2030 and 2045. While they seem like they're far off, they really aren't that far off in the future. And it takes 10 to 20 years to build a new transmission line. So there's, there's some tension there. So we also have to balance that with historic cost of living challenges that our customers are facing now. When you build a lot of infrastructure that goes into the rates, it is shared among all of our customers, but ultimately the rate goes up because of that. So how do we balance all these requirements and try to keep the cost of energy low? That is one of our bigger challenges as well. This slide shows you the scale of what we need. On the very left, the first bar there, those in 2023 are energy sources. Puget Sound Energy have our, our total generating capacity, what we generate and what we buy, is about 6,566 megawatts right now. That is what we're currently at. In 2030, we're going to need 6,700 megawatts of renewable energy. And there's a little bit of provision down that gray section for non-renewable energy, which will be offset by credits. But by 2045, we're going to need 15,000, that's the projection, megawatts of renewable resources. On the left side of the screen, that is some of the equipment that we are going to need to either buy, build, purchase. Peaking plants, wind turbines, solar plants, there's a lot going on in the energy world. And one of the things that makes this even more challenging is we're not only competing with other utilities for these resources and projects. Now we're competing with the, the large computer companies, the large search engines that want to go green as well. So there is more competition on the market for these resources. So I talked a little bit already about the increase in electricity demand. We expect the electric load to grow at an average annual rate of 1.4%. A lot of that is from EVs in our service area. And we've talked about federal and state adoption of investment incentives that is, that is fueling that use of electricity. But we also had Wash, the Washington State Building Codes that went into effect on March 15th, 2024. They make it very expensive to install natural gas in any new construction. You can still do it, but you have to offset that with clean energy efficiencies also on your project. It, it makes it very, very expensive. So we assume that most new construction, if not all, will be electrified in the future, so that increases the draw as well. We also have an upward trend in new larger customers, especially in the technological areas, data centers, et cetera. We also have large commercial developments and transportation electrification that are driving the increase in use of electricity. So what do we do? We have to plan. And the bill that passed, this past legislature, House Bill 1589, helps us do that planning. In the past, we had to do seven, seven separate reports to the UTC, that's Utilities and Transportation Commission, and regulate our, our industry. And this bill consolidates that down into one plan. Those seven plans each had, they were called Integrated Resource Plans. The bill allows us to do just one report called an Integrated System Plan. So that has been very helpful, but it's just more effective and efficient to plan for decarbonization on both systems at once instead of doing it separately. So that's going to be helpful. Well, one thing that we have learned as we've gone through that project is natural gas, like I kind of alluded to, its use is not going to go away. Not until we get something that our customers can afford and use. So this slide talks a little bit about how our, on a cold day in, in our service territory, we rely very heavily on natural gas to keep folks warm. So it would take a lot to get rid of that infrastructure. So we shall see, who knows? Maybe there'll be a technological advance and somebody will come up with something that we can actually use the same pipes for to keep people warm. So more to come on that. On the natural gas side, we are trying emission reduction strategies, conservation, decarbonization studies, pilot programs. We've got one in our Frederickson Natural Gas Plant, where we are putting small amounts of hydrogen and renewable natural gas into pipes to see how the pipes react and also the appliances that rely on natural gas. How, how are they going to react when we start putting not just natural gas in the system? So that pilot program is underway at PSC. We're also exploring alternate fuels, renewable natural gas and hydrogen. Our two of them, like I said, RNG and hydrogen are very expensive right now. We've also done a very thorough review of our entire natural gas system, and we tried to seal as many leaks as possible. What do we call it? Our Find and Fix Program. So we're working on that as well to reduce our emissions. I've kind of talked already about most of this stuff. On the top is our Frederickson Plant, and on the bottom is our Wild Horse Wind Facility. If you haven't toured that, I recommend that. It is a great tour. But basically, the slide, slide, I mentioned these things I've already mentioned. The main point is that there's a need for something to replace natural gas. Right now, there's no cost-effective replacement, and new technologies are coming, but not for some time. So that kind of throws us into our next slide, which is what are we looking at? So we are pursuing as a utility and all, all of the above strategies. In July, we put out a large request for proposals to anybody who has a great clean energy generation or storage idea. We would love to hear from you. I believe we're going to look at those in October as we get them all in. And the, there's no silver bullet. We're going to have to use a lot of different strategies to get this done. What's on the horizon is advanced small modular nuclear reactors, SMRs. PSC has invested $10 million in Energy Northwest is the company's name. I think they're out of Eastern Washington. To, we're, we're supporting their early development activities in the nuclear reactor. And again, these are small modulators. These aren't your big massive facilities. They're scalable and they're, they, they're small. They don't take up a lot of land. So we'll see where, where things pan out on that. We are also part of the Pacific Northwest Hydrogen Hub. The feds are incentivizing the use of hydrogen. So we will see where we land on some of the projects that are going through in that hub. We are also partnering with Form Energy on a new type of long storage battery. And let me show you what that's going to look like. This is what it looks like. This is Form Energy. It is a 100-hour battery. And it's, it's, what do they call it? It's, it's rust. It rusts. When things rust, it makes energy. I'm going to try to find my, okay, here we go. It utilizes iron-air technology and a reverse rusting process that allows for a much longer duration than that of lithium-ion technologies. So lots of stuff in the air that we're working on. This one is becoming very serious for us. We are working with Form. We, in 2025, we're going to do project design, sign contracts. And if we get a red, a green light from the UTC, we are going to move ahead. And we expect the pilot to go in service in 2026. Battery energy storage system. So this is where we'd love to partner with the port. These are scalable. These are systems that pull energy from the grid and store it, or they could also pull it from solar panels and store it. And then when there is a need, an, an extreme load or just an unusually high load, like during a cold snap or a heat snap, when people want to turn on the furnaces or their air conditioners, we would pull from these battery energy storage systems. We are talking about doing small-scale, utility scale. One of the utility scale, you know, the back of a semi-truck, the container, that's about the size of one of the components of utility scale. And you can, you can scale them by putting a whole bunch of them. Utility scale battery energy storage system takes about 10 acres. To, and that's about a, say, 200 megawatt facility with a 10-acre site. But we can also do just one shipping container somewhere with a solar panel or put it, or put them in substations, which, which is great because doing that also keeps us from having to build more transmission lines and more distribution lines. It's more environmentally friendly, but the company is really putting a lot of weight in using battery energy storage systems. We've got a couple of pilot projects. We just finished one up in Sabamish, which is a microgrid. It's got a solar panel that feeds a battery that's going to power a fire station and a couple houses in the community. We're also working on one into nine open coda. It's going to be and power the high school as an emergency center. So folks, if there's ever kind of an emergency, they can gather there and they'll have power. So we've got a couple pilot projects, but we, the RFP also requests battery energy storage systems if folks have ideas, et cetera. So would love to, to work with the port and maybe partner on, on some of those kind of clean energy projects with you fine folks. So there's a lot of concern sometimes from the public about fire safety. However, you know, those are from, the technology has just evolved so quickly since 2017, when we started to see the emergence of these systems. So a lot of technology has gone into improving safety standards, improving design. They used to throw water on them if there was a thermal reaction or, or a problem, but that's not what they do anymore. It's not the right thing to do. So a lot of technology has been improved. But we are also working with fire departments, and we've brought in a fire consultant. We used to work for the Seattle Police Department, Chris Green, and he's going to consult for us to make sure that we're doing it right because safety is our top concern for our customers. So that is battery energy storage systems. And like I promised, here are, here's that list of, of projects that we have started since 2019 and the associated megawatts that can be generated from these. So it's, so the path forward is very complex. And like I said, there's no silver bullet. But we would love to work with the port on any kind of projects that you would be interested in. And thank you for your time. I'm going to hand it over to Beth Gilbertson, and she's going to talk a little bit about our, our incentives and some programs that we have that might be of interest.
Sure. Could we ask questions before?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a list.
Christine, mostly, and I think both Commissioner Harding and I have previously wondered about this. Do you already have in mind different sites? The port has a lot of property here in Olympia and then in Tumwater surrounding the airport. Are those, are you targeting specific areas for this or just anything you can find?
Anything we can find. And what's unique about this request for proposal, request for proposal is that this will be the first time that Puget Sound Energy is also going to be a bidder in that process. So we are trying to be very transparent and very hands-off. So folks who are interested need, I can send a link to you guys where you can look at the requirements and the application. But because of that potential conflict of interest, we are just saying yes. Come, tell us what you would like to do and
So PSC is putting out the RFP, but it's also a bidder for its own RFP, and that's because the regulator likes to see that somehow?
Well, it's the first time we've done it. I'm not quite sure the background on the regulator stuff. I can find out for you. But it puts us in a unique situation that we haven't been in before.
Sure. And then my other question, if that's okay, is that one thing I've wondered, we heard from LOT, the wastewater treatment plant, which is a sort of intergovernmental organization, that they're the largest power user in Thurston County. And I mentioned, I've worked in the past a little bit on And I mentioned, I've worked in the past a little bit on energy policy, and my first question was, is there an opportunity for them behind the meter? Possibly so that they you would own and operate stores that can be helpful, but so that the public governments are benefiting a little bit from the investment. Is that something you have, has has P S E and Lot ever discussed this?
Not to date. I have heard of their interest.
Lot's interest?
Yes.
Oh, terrific.
Yes. So we've heard of their interest. We've got um business services folks who work directly with them, who are are working out those issues. So, yeah, what they're, I was just watching um I was reading the Wall Street Journal, maybe that's what it was. There's utilities that are generating electricity, water, water resource folks who are generating electricity. There's a lot of water pressure, I guess, in those systems. So there's some special new valve they can put on them that will actually capture that pressure and generate energy. It's not a lot, but it's enough to offset a lot of the the inner the costs that they have. So a lot of lot of fun stuff out there in technology.
Uh, so piggybacking on Commissioner Vasavida's question, if the port was interested in the developer operated battery storage, we would look at the R F P. Uh, and then what would the impact of this initiative regarding natural gas have on P S E's delivery of services if it were to move forward?
Is that twenty sixty six?
I don't know. The one thing about natural, yeah, Bob shake or Commissioner I'll shaking his head.
But there's twenty sixty six. P S E is not taking a position um on yea or nay. Um, it could be impactful. I think it repeals some of the planning processes in fifteen eighty nine. Um, it's kind of like to be determined at this point. Um, we will do what our customers want us to do. And when their voice is heard, we will follow that. If they want to continue the use of natural gas, and I think the bill twenty, the initiative twenty sixty six pulls back the state building code, natural gas requirements. And so if if our customers want us to put gas in, we are there for them and we will continue to do that. Fifteen eighty nine did not take away natural gas, that our ability to do that. I think there was a lot of misinformation around that bill when it passed um earlier this year. So we can still do it. Um, if it does get rid of the the code restrictions, we'll continue to do it. There's a couple other provisions uh twenty sixty six had to do with um oh, I can't remember off the top of my head. There's so much to that legislation, forgive me, but I I can get you the details on exactly what it, how it impacts our natural gas side, if you're curious, Commissioner Harding.
Yes. Um, I'm also curious when we're talking about the emissions of electricity and the production of electricity, and I'm thinking about solar and wind turbines and the composites or plastics that are used to create. Are the emissions that are used to create the product that's creating the energy considered when taking into consideration no emissions?
I have no idea. That's a great question.
As well as the disposal. So the production and disposal. Well, production, obviously, there's emissions when you're creating certain types of plastics. Um, and then there's emissions when you're managing trash. Um, so I'm just curious whether that's considered when we say zero emission.
Well, when we're.
Thank you, Beth. Please. Wonderful.
So when we're talking in the context of P S E, carbon footprint, greenhouse gas, that is not factored in.
So it's just that the it's a snapshot in time. It's not the entire greenhouse gas emission of that production of energy. Okay. Um, and is there a way of understanding? Just I am not a scientist, but understanding the true impact of greenhouse gas emission for each of the different types of energy sources, rather than just
They're talking from cradle to grave.
Yeah, because that's the real impact, right?
Sure. Um, and and so I would say yes. Um, and and is P S E gonna pursue and dive into that and understand that? Right now, I I don't think so. Um, it could they? I mean, I'm sure the data is out there. I'm sure if we uh looked into Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratories, we could find some wonderful studies and 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 papers on it. But uh right now um the focus is on um meeting our um requirements ahead in front of us and and meeting the goal.
And so when Washington State says zero emissions, they mean that snapshot. They don't not mean the cradles group. Okay. Uh, I think that's all.
I I do have a quick follow on to your presentation about commercial batteries. So um, P S E is engaged in R F P to procure a commercial battery response vendor. Uh, the launch on that is twenty twenty five, and it's going to be bring your own battery, B Y O V. Um, you participate in P S E's virtual power plant for grid demand response. So it's that your battery will provide a backup power for your facility, and then you will receive financial incentives to participate in P S E demand response events. So um, that's coming in twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
That's that's just new information. I didn't have time to slide that in. I just got that the other day, so. I'm going to leave it here. So, okay, so here I am. So I'm Beth Gilbertson, and um I have very, I'm devoted to energy efficiency and renewables with P S E. That's what I do. Um, they call me a accounts executive, and I support municipality sector, university sector, and K through twelve sector. Um, connect those customers with all of our energy efficiency programs, um incentives and rebates. And uh before I continue on, just do want to give a quick shout out to another colleague in the room, Chantel Scanzo. She is the, he she is the port's account manager. So if you have other things you need P S E's help on, that isn't energy efficiency, rebates, programs related to that or um relate to government affairs, Christine, Chantel is your person, and she can uh connect you with all sorts of different teams within P S E. Okay, so let's get going. All right, this is what I'm going to talk to you about. It's not as long as Christine, so um I'm sure you all are happy to hear that. No, you did a fantastic job. You were so thorough, very impressed. So we're going to talk about community solar and E V charging uh incentive programs. And we also have a new incentive program. It's building incentive audits that's quite fascinating and and very um advantageous to the port. So let's talk community solar. All right, community solar is a P S E program where we use your roofs to put solar panels, P V panels, solar arrays, whatever you want to call them. We basically lease your roof from you, and we send that energy back out onto the grid for our other P S E customers to use. That's what it is. We also make thirty percent of those shares available to income eligible customers. Those are customers from named community, vulnerable communities, so they can take care of those opportunities. Right, we have, this is a new program. We currently operational in Olympia here. Right, we're at Olympia, Sammish, Bonnie Lake, with three other arrays in Kiddecast. So it's Thurgood Marshall Middle School, because you all would want to know that. All right, that's the one Olympia and Sammish. It is Pine Lake. Yeah, Pine Lake Community Solar. Um, and that's a hundred and seventy five kilowatts. And then up at Bonnie Lake, it's on there, a storage reservoir. And that's four hundred and fifty K W. All right, the benefits are it helps you contribute to meeting sustainability goals. It uh is great for your branding and community support. It you will also receive some compensation from P S E for letting us use your roof. And it also reduces your E U I T. And E U I T is energy use intensity, and that's part of the clean buildings performance standard. So you can deduct your um generation of kilowatts from the uh total use of energy of your building. All right, so what does it take to um apply? Well, you just submit it simply to the uh to our website, and we will evaluate your application and um get back to you. And um definitely, if you meet the criteria, we will be in touch. So what is the criteria? Well, you need to have a good roof or a ground space that's about twenty thousand square feet, um ten thousand minimum. You must have a su- southern exposure, unshaded, and your roof life must be about twenty five years. So it has to be a fairly new um site must be with in within three hundred feet of a pole vault transformer. Um, P S E will need access to it twenty four seven, three sixty five. And if you want more details, it is on our website. All right, move on. Any questions about that program?
Swan, do you have a any of these, given how much power you need to bring online? Do you have any of these where P S E kind of finances the investment?
That's exactly what it is. You don't want nothing. I skipped over that very important piece. That's right. Very, thank you for clarifying. P S E um installs, owns, operates, maintains the equipment. And after fifteen years of being in place, you all will have an option to purchase at a re at reduced cost, of course, you know, it would be the age and the maintenance of the facet of the array, but it is at no cost to you all to host the solar array on your roof.
And is there a limit on uh if you had a five hundred thousand square foot warehouse, could you have a five hundred thousand square foot worth of solar? I is there a capacity? Is it unlimited capacity that you?
Capacity. You do have to consider the age of the roof, and you have to take a look at the structural integrity of the existing building to make sure it can hold the um P V panel weight.
And one of the things that's come up in my commercial real estate world is that the roof structures actually have to be designed differently to support the structure of the solar, so retrofitting doesn't work. Has that been your experience or have you re? I'm assuming you retrofitted Marshall because this is new, or did they?
As far as the what was involved with making it structurally sound to receive those panels, I have to get back to you on it.
Because that would be useful to us as because what it does have to be, if it does require a completely different uh building, then that's a different conversation than if you can build the same building and put the solar on top.
When you submit your application, that turns on the assessment of the site to make sure it meets all that those requirements. You wouldn't have to pay for any of that. The experts at P S E would take care of it.
And is it correct that for new buildings, the building codes have sort of um stepped up to require roofs to be kind of solar ready or?
I am not sure. I'm I that's outside my area of expertise. I do not know. Any other questions? No questions. It's up and go electric. All right, let's talk about E V charging. It was mentioned a a couple of presentations ago that you all are pursuing that, and we have three different E V charging opportunities to discuss. The first one is for fleet. So with fleet, we have two types of service. We have turnkey, which is P S E owned, and then we have if you own it yourself. Um, if you if it's turnkey and and P S E would do everything, we would take care of the planning, the design, installation, maintenance of the charging stations, and that would be including covering most of that utility infrastructure, facility upgrades necessary to complete the installation. And um so P S E will plan, implement, and take any necessary infrastructure upgrades and take care of those and manage the permitting. Um, also, we will cover networking and ongoing maintenance for ten years. Um, if you want to go with customer owned, you'll install and own and maintain the charging stations, and P S E will pay incentives up to four thousand per level two charging port and sixty thousand dollars for direct charge. E V charging, the the fast charge with a maximum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per charging location. Um, and here's an overview of the incentives. This slide deck is going to be available to you, so I won't spend a lot of time going over the numbers, but here's how it breaks down um each of those options. Next is for the workplace. So again, you have two options. You can use the turnkey service, or you could do owned um with the turnkey service for the workplace. Um, P S E will handle a hundred percent of the installation and maintenance costs up to twelve thousand dollars per level two charging ports, and that incl- is up to ten port ports per property. So that's a comprehensive um installation. P S E will take that on. Um, if you want to do customer owned, P S E is funding offsets fifty percent of equipment and installation costs up to twenty two thousand dollars per level two charging and for ten per ports per um. And then here's the breakdown. Oh, I don't have a breakdown on that one, but um it's pretty straightforward. Um, turnkey P S E does everything, owns everything. If you want to do customer owned, P S E will incentive is about fifty percent. And lastly, on the up and go is the public charging. So that's for community spaces. Um, it's intended for um facilities such as yourselves or entities as yourselves. Um, and the incentives will cover the full cost of equipment installation for level two and the fast charging port ports. Um, if you want to do customer, excuse me, yeah, customer owned option, um you'll fully manage the installation and ownership and maintenance, a direct, you'll have direct control over the charger purchase, installation and maintenance options. Well, there's the breakdown of the incentives for that. Moving on, if you have additional questions for the up and go, here's Kate Hardring. She implements this program. You can contact her or or myself. But she is a great resource. And now we're going to move on to the building audit. So these are Ashray Level Two Audit. Ashray is American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers. This is um a great opportunity um for building owners that have buildings that are fifty thousand square feet or larger. Um, recently passed Clean Building Performance Standard requires um compliance and doing this Ashray audit, you will have a energy professionals come in and calculate your E U I T and inspect your facilities. And so um let's see where was it? Um. So to be qualified, you must be fifty thousand square feet or larger, and you must receive electric service. So you do have one building here. I believe it's the Marine Terminal that could benefit from this, and it's a hundred percent paid for by P S E. And the cost of it really depends on the the building, but it's anywhere from, oh, I don't know, fifteen thousand to twenty five thousand, just depending your on your facility. The end of the audit, this is what will be included on the report. It's a very robust report, and it will deliver information on low cost, no cost opportunities you can do, and will also detail capital projects. And it will um give you the cost for those, and it will also match those up with all the P S E incentives that's available. Then I threw this in because this is another example of all the different opportunities and programs we have. Won't go through each one, but we have quite a few. So thank you so much for your time, and if you have questions, I'm here. Do any questions?
They're saying.
Oh, yeah, you go.
All right.
Just one more.
Sure.
Okay, I'm not sure who this is for exactly, Mike, but uh we are one of the big things we service is industrial, um and we've had industrial users who have been interested in electrifying their trucks or having the ability to build facilities where that is available for the future, essentially, because that technology is still evolving. Um, there has been a disconnect between the availability of service. Essentially, they've been told no by Puget Sound Energy that there isn't capacity. Is that that still, I you were talking about the increase to fifteen thousand, you know, this massive increase in electrical demand. How do we as an industrial user deal with the reality of that? Need is is are those two coming together at all? Is it possible to service the industrial users um with electrification? Or are we still not there yet?
We can be there. Um, there was a case that I heard of last week in another um P S E employee's presentation. They had a Renton is one area that really has grown past P S E's electric capacity. And so instead of putting in more substations and more distribution and transmission lines, what one company has done, we've worked with them, is to cite a battery on their facility. And so at nighttime, the battery charges up, and it is, it will provide them with the electricity that they need that is not coming off the grid. So we are working with our customers individually for those unique situations to figure out how we can best serve them. Um, because yes, we are it's uh it can be challenging in some areas to have that sufficient infrastructure.
But onsite battery storage would be an option.
Which is absolutely. Yeah.
Uh, I I just have a quick question on uh I guess your uh your programs that you talked a little bit about for reducing uh or working with customers to maybe help reduce the energy consumption. And I I just I noticed that during the, we had a pretty hot period there this summer, and and I was getting texts and
Yes.
emails daily that uh and I was getting texts and emails daily that encouraging people to turn down the the air conditioners and whatnot. So I'm just curious to have if you had any data on how effective that was.
We do have data on that. Whether I can share that or not is another, they they share it within the company and it's for, you know, PSC employees only. But I'll find out if we can share that, Commissioner. Um, those are our flex programs. We have different levels um where you can just join and get a gold star if you reduce your energy use. We also have incentive programs. If you have a smart thermostat, we can track um how much energy you've saved and you get, you know, money off of your costs, off your electricity bill. And we have other uh incentive programs where we you have a smart meter and we turn it down with your permission and only with your permission. And that gives you even more incentives. So there are different levels of our flex program. But in reality, we are going to have to turn more and more to what's called distribute just distributed energy resources. And a part of that program is having our customers partner with us to reduce their energy use. Um, it's especially going to be needed with our EVs. So when folks, I was just having dinner with someone, they're like, oh, yeah, I went home and plugged in my EV. And I'm like, no, 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 don't plug in your EV until midnight. Don't plug in when you get home at five. So that just puts a huge load on the grid. So those kind of programs are what we really are going to have to partner with. Because the future of energy is not going to be us providing you electricity. We are all going to have to work together. We also have another program called our virtual power plant. And that is where we are going to come to you eventually in the future. We've got pilot programs out there. Say you've got a big Ford F1, whatever number it is that has the big battery. You get home, it's all charged up, you plug it into the wall. We our virtual power plant can tell that you have energy in your battery and you're not using it. And you're going to allow us to pull that energy and provide it to other users. So it's going to be not just a one way street in the future when it comes to energy. It's going to be your partner, your your neighbor powering something and it it's it's going to be very different, the energy, the future of energy. It has to be.
Demand response is a big thing that we've been implementing and that's what you're talking about and that happened during the summer. It also happened during the winter, during that cold snap.
Yeah.
I believe January. So demand response is here. And uh participation can be either be a request or it can be something you sign up for and say yes to. And um as you mentioned, yeah, it'll be through the thermostats and the um and then the text saying, hey, it's time to reduce your consumption, start turning stuff off.
Yep. Yes. So it'll it's it's an interesting time to be in energy policy. There is a lot going on and a lot of innovative ideas. And Puget Sound Energy is at the forefront of all of them. And we have people coming to our company to work with us because they want to be a part of what we're doing. So please know that we are very, very engaged. We are very, very aggressive and we are working very hard to meet our goals.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, I think sounds like that's it.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. You're welcome to stay with us. Uh, James is gonna come up then. He's gonna take a cozy seat here.
Alright, it's like we're moving into budget review and capital investment plan.
Yes.
Alright.
So my name is James Summer, capital assets program manager. And as you mentioned, we're going to be going over budget review and capital investment plan. So today's presentation, uh it's a briefing only. There's no action required. Couple of things we're going to talk about is the capital investment annual program, the draft twenty twenty five capital budget, and then uh the schedule that you saw at the end of the presentation last Monday. Just bring back up the budget schedule. A little bit overview of the capital investment plan. Um, some of you may have seen this presentation, but I just wanted to go over kind of how it was created. So we started in twenty twenty two uh to start building out this program to really start looking at a long term outlook for our capital investments. In twenty twenty three, last year, uh we did our first five year projection based on um what we thought we would need and kind of looking five years out. And then this year, we're working on a ten year program outlook. Obviously, when you look out that far, it's very speculative. But uh it kind of helps us track some of those bigger ticket items that we know are coming uh and make sure that we're talking about them and planning toward them. Some of the benefits, uh the first one's financial stewardship. Again, if we know what projects are coming down the line, uh we can kind of space out uh our projects now. And we don't uh work on a project that we know we're going to replace in a couple of years. Transparency, again, it kind of gives everyone else a look into what we're doing. I helps to inform you guys, uh not only what we're doing now, but where we're looking for the future and the public as well. Balance port wide, some of these projects end up being higher dollar projects, uh and we don't have the funds to attack all at once. So by having this long term plan, maybe one year we focus at the Marina. Uh, the next year, maybe real estate gets a larger chunk of the capital investment, but it makes sure that we're really spreading those dollars around and all of our business units are being supported. And last benefit I have on here is leveraging external funding sources. Again, some of these projects are very large dollar value projects. So if we know they're coming down the road, we can kind of position ourselves to look at external funding. Uh, you may or may not know when you apply for a grant, a lot of the times you don't get that funding for at least a year or sometimes further out. So by having this longer outlook, it really helps us target some of that funding early and that hopefully help us to budget for those. So the process for the plan, uh we start by identifying projects that are greater than ten thousand dollars. A lot of these are in the initial build out was our asset assessments. So we had some building assessments, some asphalt assessments, as well as just interviewing our staff and talking about the needs uh some of our assets and how they're aging. We developed an evaluation criteria. Is this something we're mandated to do? Is this a safety concern? Is it a revenue generation project? Is it replacing a project uh that is currently a generation of revenue? We start looking at funding sources. Uh, so a good example, this is the airport. Through the FAA, we get a lot of grant dollars to them to fund these projects. So we're looking at, you know, if it's a project that is a larger dollar value, uh you know, what are the funding opportunities that's ready to go now or is this maybe a year or two out project? We rank the projects using that evaluation criteria and then we try to schedule the projects year by year based on how they rank out. Some of the focuses and challenges uh with creating this plan and implementing it. Current focus is long term planning. As I mentioned, this year, we're attempting to do a ten year outlook. So again, that just really helps us to plan for the future, plan for those bigger hits. Another focus is income generation. We want to focus on projects that bring additional revenue to the port so that we can build our nest egg and start to tackle some of those bigger projects that we know are coming. And external funding. So if we know those bigger projects are coming, we can start focusing our efforts on how are we going to pay for them? Some of the challenges we face are backlog. We initially started with around a hundred and fifty projects uh on our list and it is always growing. And so the capital investment plan, the draft uh that came as part of this packet is a very, very narrowed down of that list. But there's capacity, you know, what can our current staffing achieve? We've had some vacancies, which has caused uh some issues. We're we're finally stabilizing out there, which is wonderful. But then also, how many of these projects can we realistically get done in a year? And then, as always, funding. If you gave me thirty million dollars today, we still couldn't tackle all of the long term needs. And so but we're always looking at how we can leverage those external funding sources. So a couple highlighted projects. Again, the entire draft uh was provided in budget, but I did want to call out some of these projects on here. Uh, either they're projects that you haven't heard of yet, or maybe they morphed uh from previous versions. So the first category is for the airport runway seventeen three five pavement and electrical rehabilitation. So this project scope would include a million and asphalt inlay of about seven hundred and fifty feet of the south portion of runway seventeen three five. It also upgrades our existing runway lighting system to new energy efficient LED and replaces some regulators. If that project sounds somewhat familiar, is it was on the books for this year. Um, thanks to the work from our airport senior manager and our um airport engineering firm, we have changed the scope of this project a little bit to better fit our exact needs, so they've able to hone in. Uh, and this is on the books for next year. We do have some work going in design this year, but the majority of this project will be for next year. The apron and taxiway repair and striping. So this is for the airport's east apron and ramp, uh taxiway echo and taxiway Bravo. That sees the most of the airport's aviation businesses, the tenants and transient aircraft. So this would be cracked ceiling uh along with seal coat and new striping to meet FAA design standards. Part of that will be reflective striping to help with day and night operations and be more um safety and again up to FAA regulations. And the last project I highlighted was the gate electronics and motor replacement. So in early twenty twenty three, we had a pretty severe storm. Uh, lightning struck the gates and damaged a lot of our hardware and components. And going to replace those parts, we realized that a lot of that system is obsolete and we're finding a very hard time to find parts for them uh as well as uh firmware updates. And so part of that is to update these gates and get them so they are secure to keep our airport facilities secure and make sure that tenants and port staff alike can access the airport. The other area I have on here is the marine and boat works. So the one project I wanted to call out there is the boatworks yard expansion. So we are currently investigating taking our current boat yard and expanding it towards marine drive. Uh, there's an area there that we estimate we can get around fifteen to twenty more stalls for boatworks. Uh, we have a number of craft, uh thirty five to forty foot is kind of our bread and butter. Uh, and we see the need and it would like to increase capacity for those. We can have more and generate additional income. But not only expanding for those craft, but also to open up a few of the larger slips that we currently can't accommodate due to the configuration of the boatyard. So during this project, we would also lay out differently so that we can include some of those larger vessels as well.
Would that allow for demolition of derelict vessels onsite? Or do we still, would we still not have room for that?
So currently, we do them in our boatyards. So for the immediate future, we would continue to do so. Uh, one project we do want to look into, not for next year, but in the future, is to build a dedicated, for lack of a better term, kill pit. Uh, this would allow us to have a dedicated area that you, for lack of a better term, uh where we can control the runoff. A lot of the problems we have now is that it is weather dependent. Because when we are crushing those derelict vessels, uh we have to be able to control the source uh and all the runoff from that. So we still would like to investigate that as a future project, uh but that would still continue in our boatyard as is now.
So we're doing it. We're just limited on how much of it we can do.
Absolutely.
Okay. And this will not impact that. That would be a future consideration.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Sure. Uh, I finally met at the port tenant appreciation event, um the head of the New Markets Skills Center, which is at our Tom Water Campus. And when we were talking, he said there's significant interest. Part of uh the reason they were part of a marine center conversation is that they can train on diesel engines, including the boat engines. When we had that conversation, it did have me wondering about the real facility they would need and would it be more a part of kind of the waterfront center as it's so far been conceived, which I think we're we're going through some new thinking about. Or is it more really a part of um the boatworks area? And so I just wanted to, while you're you're highlighting a capital project there, I hope that James, maybe you can work with Marina staff and with the New Market Skill Center to understand a little more specificity about their program and the kind of facility. Because I think it's the kind of facility that would be closer to a kill pit.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you brought that up. We did meet uh with the market skill center and we talked about their program and kind of their needs. And so I think we will have future conversations with them. But yes, I think that is a wonderful opportunity to partner with them uh on either the boatworks area or i- in the the center.
Can I ask you to come back, whether it's to the commission or one on one to me to to understand more of as you explore that, like which kind of facility is it really?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, James.
And then our last area that I want to touch base on today was the Marine Terminal. I don't want to talk too much in depth on the first item. Option will be before you on September twenty third, I believe, next Monday to go in more depth on this project. However, uh we are looking to expand uh storage capacity at the Marine Terminal. So a lot of times throughout the year, we are at a hundred percent capacity. So this would allow us to have greater capacity that to bring in cargo. The second item on there is a mophie trailer. And so this is just a piece of equipment that is to help move cargo throughout the yard as it's coming off the ships and into either the warehouse or rail cars or trucks. And the last item on here, the warehouse lighting technique upgrade. Uh, we actually worked with PSC and one of their rebates and had them come out and do an audit of our warehouse. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, we are currently running fluorescent P eight bulbs in the warehouse. And this project would help us become more energy efficient by switching to LED. Also, very important, uh this would increase our foot candles in the warehouse so that as we are going through night operations, um it'll just give better visibility to the staff who are working in there uh as we do have those situations where we are at capacity and and everyone is in there working at the same time. So uh it's kind of a double benefit. So the draft capital plan, the guys want to stress this is the draft plan. Uh, currently, the funding sits at around twelve point eight million. It is six point two million of external funding and six point two million of port funds. So how we came up with this number is we'd really just looked um what are our needs? You know, how do we accomplish not only our needs for our business lines, but making sure that we're hitting our strategic initiatives and then also taking care of our projects that are mandated? So we will be uh further evaluating this and coming back before you, I believe, well, I'll get to it uh at a later date in October. And that is the first time where we will blend the operational budget with the capital budget, the draft capital budget, to really see what these numbers mean and see how that impacts. And uh as I mentioned, uh the entire list uh is included in your packet, but this is as the draft currently where we sit as of today. And then this is the budget timeline. Uh, this is the schedule that Todd presented to you. I don't want to go through each one of these line by line, but the one I want to call to attention is that October twenty first date. And that's when I mentioned that the draft capital plan and the operations budget will come together. And then we really get an understanding of what the impact of this is. And then October twenty eighth will be the second review that will be involved with. And then the one on here I want to call to attention is November twenty fifth, and this is the end of the budget uh process when we adopt. And I would ask for any questions or comments.
Uh, I've got a comment on the uh boatworks yard expansion.
Yes.
Um, I I'm gonna, personally, I'm gonna need some um uh some real good information on what what is what is making that um expansion. Uh, how is that going to help our performance, financial performance specifically um at at the Marina in Boat Works Yard? Uh, financially, I don't, I can't in my mind right now, I can't justify that type of an investment in a in a uh in a uh business line that's just not performing financially. And I, you know, I understand, we talked about it when we had our update uh at our at our last meeting, our Q two, and we kind of we looked at the finances for the Marina and in a in a uh collective way with the the uh fuel dock and the boatyard and understanding that the um uh Q two through through Q two this year, uh there's probably their slow period. Um, but you know what, historically, it looks like we we go into the summer months and we have more activity, but we don't necessarily become more profitable. And so really going to have to have justification on 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 a investment like that for myself.
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that point up. I forgot to mention, uh when we come back, we will also have the white papers included. They're in the draft format now, which is why they have not been provided for this meeting. But in that, we will explain uh the investment and then what we anticipate the return on investment to be based on you know, what we've had in the IS department, you know, what is the generation of revenue that we see now per slip? And then, you know, if we add eighteen slips over the course of the year, what do we expect?
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Sure.
Oh, just that if you are coming back with a white paper and justification, um I for one, I I value the marinas as part of art downtown and and part of the beauty of being here. At the same time, I get the sense that Swan Town actually is has lower fees, like lower rates than surrounding marinas. And so I wonder if you could include a question about that um to the extent it starts to seem like we're you know, understanding how it compares with the neighboring.
Absolutely. And I'll lean uh pretty heavily on Warren for that information, uh but certainly that's something we can bring forward.
And then just back to the boatyard briefly, I was curious about the
Just back to the boatyard briefly, I was curious about the stormwater.
Absolutely. Yes. And in addition, we are currently undergoing a stormwater unit filtration design. That's part of the capital project for this year that will likely be a carryover for next year as we wait and work with ecology to get approval. However, all of our early indications are due to the size of the lot we currently have and kind of the limitations on equipment selection, we actually will be installing a system potentially that will be designed for capacity. For that capacity, if we decide to expand the boat. So we will be future-proofing as we take on stormwater system.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thanks, James. Okay, I guess we're gonna talk about agenda setting time.
That is me. Good afternoon again. Thank you very much, commissioners. So before you is our draft schedule for upcoming meetings, and I want to bring to your attention the meeting on September twenty-third. And that we have right now, it's tentative based on this meeting here. An action other item, and that's a resolution to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then that would, what that would do is in that resolution with your with your consent, then we would not be holding commission meetings on Indigenous Peoples' Day. This year, October fourteenth is Indigenous Peoples' Day. So that would we'd have the, have the need to move those agenda topics off. I've been working on what that would look like. And so we've, I think the HCP update on October fourteenth could be moved. I'm not quite sure it's gonna be ready. Sean, can you speak to that?
I have a question before you answer. When I made that recommendation, I was thinking for the twenty twenty-five calendar. And so I would just open it up to the group as to we, we have made a statement that we try not to do action other unless it's an emergency. And so doing an action other so that we can move it seems a bit rushed to me unless people feel a sense of urgency to do it for this year. So before Sean goes into whether we can move it, I wanted to open that up to the rest of the commission as far as what you all would like to see.
Well, I don't really have a strong opinion, so if anybody else does.
I don't have a strong concern because although with actions that are like investments of in capital things or, or long-term decisions of the port, I really think it's super important that the public have the opportunity to have input and, and absorb that. I think with how we self-administer our own meetings and whether we choose to meet on October fourteenth, I, I don't share that level of concern about doing that as action other. The other thing that would counsel in favor of this is that the port is taking on some really significant transitions right now and launching all this master planning. So I think we've, I at least have talked with Director Smith about whether we can give back any time, knowing how much time goes into these meetings. I would be, I would be in favor of continuing this conversation and seeing if there's other impacts that counsel against canceling October fourteenth, but I'm, I'm comfortable with that as an action other for the twenty-third. How do you feel?
I support either way. It would be nice to have Indigenous Peoples' Day off, but
One of the things is we have had participation from community to come in on Indigenous Peoples' Day and, and so, I mean, I think, I, I thought the urgency might have been yours, Commissioner Harding. So now I'm now I'm, I'm just kind of thinking that maybe we, we shouldn't be too, too hasty. Let's I, I would be in favor of keeping this year's October fourteenth, but opening the conversation for future years.
Commissioner Tong, do you have?
In that case, is there any reason to have a resolution on it? I mean, for the
I think it, it just is in our, at the beginning of the year, you adopt the meeting agenda, right? And so it could be. But I do think as a commission, we need to decide whether, and we can have that discussion later or now, I guess, is I have a strong opinion there.
The resolution could come before you at any of the meetings then throughout twenty twenty-four. And if you, you could do an advisory and an action or a consent and then when we get to the twenty twenty-five programming, it would be in place.
But what you're saying, Commissioner, is that we can take or leave any holidays we want in our twenty twenty-five.
Resolution. And if we do want on Indigenous Peoples' Day, the language of the resolution will be important to me, like I don't. So I don't, that would be another reason, actually.
To rush it.
Not to rush it.
Right. And I do think there could be public comment on, that would be. We want to encourage public comment whenever we can, and this is something that we're trying to honor. So I guess it sounds like we could move this more slowly, if I'm hearing the commission as a whole, is that? Fair. So moving, doing this as an advisory and then?
Yes, and, and I would recommend taking just a little bit more time to put a real quality resolution. If we want to do one that's specific to Indigenous Peoples' Day and recognize that, that gives us the time, commission the time to help.
Sorry if I inferred a sense of urgency. My bias to action always infers a sense of urgency, I think.
While we're on it, if I could just among the things we can do to improve our tribal relationships or honor our indigenous peoples, I don't know where this kind of ranks, but I do know that we are gifted by having two tribal members out of the five on our commission, which is kind of significant. And so I also would welcome it. We haven't set up a lot of subcommittees and I'm not trying to generate work. But for me, if Commissioner Sanders, I'm trying to say his last name, and Commissioner I'll wanted to kind of make recommendations in general of, of how we address any issues with respect to indigenous peoples and tribes. I would be very deferential to that and, and I actually would really support formalizing that you both are our kind of leads on that topic.
And Commissioner Iall graciously offered us his guidance on a land acknowledgement when we first started at the commission. So I think that I totally agree, differing to your leadership would be helpful. And not that you need to be the ones who are leading all the time, but if that's something you're comfortable. Maybe Camille working in consultation.
I'm sure we can, we can add some context.
So are we agreed, we're, are we, we're going to strike that from the September twenty-third meeting? It doesn't look like right now we have programming for October fourteenth that has no invitation that's gone out to special speakers or participants. Is that something we want to talk about for this October fourteen?
I, on the previous the last couple of years when we've had Indigenous People Days, meetings on Indigenous People Days, I've taken the opportunity to make a statement. We've had, we've had quite a few actually members of the public come in and make a statement on Indigenous Peoples' Day. I would be happy to defer to Commissioner Sanders if she wanted to make a statement this year on, on on that date, that would be, I think that would be, I would think that would be appropriate.
Be coming in full regalia. Oh, I got some nice regalia.
But yes, thank you, Chair. I would be honored to do that.
So are we moving forward with keeping the October fourteenth meeting? Yes.
We are.
Striking action other Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution.
And Camille programming that as you see fit after consultation with Commissioner Iall and Sanders.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. So we'll keep the fourteenth, October twenty, moving to October twenty-first, which is the next work session. I wanted to call out to you that Propolis Communications, our lobbying firm is, this is Alex asked to have this agenda to forward, talk about legislative agenda.
That for me, I was wondering whether that could be moved to the November twelfth meeting, but I guess, I understand the twenty-first because it's when we have work sessions. I think this election affects a lot that there are things on, on the and with the initiatives as well, we'll, we'll have a significant effect on issues we actually play strongly in. So for that reason, I would prefer to see it at the November eighteenth work session. But if she is our advisor, if Propolis themselves is saying we should do it at the twenty-first, then I would defer to that.
No, she's not. She's, she hasn't requested. I spoke with her today. Or she would be amenable.
That makes sense to me. Guidance from those who know more. If Kelsey and or Alex have a strong, but that makes sense.
So we'll, we'll tentatively move it to the November eighteenth and I'll make sure that when Executive Director Smith returns, but we'll, I'll call that to our intention. We'll tentatively move that out. That does leave some time for the twenty twenty-five budget and capital investment plan and operations budget. That is a, that is a significant presentation. So that that'll, that isn't at least an hour presentation to walk through that as I, to if you remember last year. All right, there's business items on the other meetings. So a question, a question though that has come up amongst staff and wanted to bring this up. Is we do, we do have some consultants whose contracts dates are expiring that are working on our master plan. And we don't anticipate increasing their contract amounts, but they were through the end of twelve thirty-one. So we'll be bringing those forward to you. Let's see, we have scheduled for October twenty-eighth. And there's, there'll be one more that is added to that. Based on some of the conversations that we've had, there are some topics I know that you'd like to see go through as consent once they've come forward. And I don't know if a date change on a contract without a dollar amount being amended is something that you would like to see go through as consent. There's, or if you would like, you would like to bring those, us to bring those forward again, and that may be situational. So if you'd like to defer to a conversation with Executive Director Smith, that's okay. But wanted to bring that up today because that's, we're, we're looking at efficiencies for time in terms of our commission meetings and where we can, where we can streamline some processes. I, I, an example was I think we had some contracts that came forward for some janitorial cleaning, cleaning services and it was used and it is an example. Was that the, the best use of your time was to talk about, you know, janitorial cleaning. And so that, so that I've been harkening back to that and staff and we were, and Sean and I were talking about that today about getting feedback from you here.
I'll just share my perspective. I think that we have been rebuilding trust both with the community and amongst ourselves. And so we have been erring on the side of putting things on the agendas. In my opinion, utilizing the consent agenda more liberal, liberally still has complete transparency with the commission as well as the public. And feedback I have gotten from other elected officials is they can't believe the things that we put on our agendas and that they should absolutely be on the consent agendas. And I think that it would be a much better use of the staff's time if, and I would like it if this commission agrees that we authorized you guys to at least start leaning in that direction so that you don't feel that we are gonna whack down of like, why didn't you? We can pull it off the consent agenda if we don't want it on there. So my preference would be that you more liberally use the consent agenda because I think it's appropriate. I think it's still transparent. It's more efficient and we do have trust internally and we're rebuilding it externally. And that allows us to meet all those risks.
I would, I agree with that. And I, I think we, we can you know, we can, we can all agree that items that go on the consent agenda, if they've gone through advisory and we're all all in consent that it's, it's a good idea, then there's just no reason for it not to be on the consent agenda.
There has been at least one case this year where I was the one who pulled something off a consent agenda and it was because I'd had a question that wasn't answered after the last hearing. So I think it just makes it really important that there be follow-up and, and that the staffer who's giving the advisory takes ownership of that follow-up. But otherwise, I totally agree with that and the use of the the law already have been briefed. So I would say on the consultant contracts, I still don't feel like I have Director Smith shared that she herself felt like we had quite a lot of consulting contracts out there. And makes sense when you think that we only have a forty-odd person staff and half of the staff are out there like doing actual day-to-day maintenance operations. That said, I, I would like at some point to just have a better overall sense of like, who are our consultants and what are they consulting on? And like almost as a list or in a brief or about it so that then I wouldn't be surprised and could kind of, you know, seek additional information where that was needed.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I think it would also help give context to like that consultant manages the stormwater system versus that consultant's doing a organizational assessment. Those are two very different things. So. Do anyone have any other, Commissioner Tong, do you have any other feelings about that?
I would like to see.
Does that help?
Yes, that helps a lot. And I'll Sean, you want to pass on the who are the consultants list? We can talk with Alex when she gets back and the team, we can figure out how to put that together efficiently.
There was one point in time when under, I think it was under Director Rudolph before Alex came. It was believed to be the best practice to kind of parse them out. So like, ask us for amendments a few weeks this month and a few next month. And, and that was almost like it was deliberately done that way. And for me, I almost would deliberately want the opposite, like the bird's eye view.
I have a few more potential topics. Are we at that point, Chair? Uh, one, I would really like us to organizationally look at the RFP on battery storage that was discussed today. Anyone not want us to do that? Okay. Yeah, that seems very exciting for many, many reasons based on what we do. So however, you all want to program that in the agenda, but I would love to see us actively working on that. And providing that as a potential solution for industrial users on the private side. Helping them see that opportunity for power generation. Or I guess it's not generation, but use. Secondly, I touched on this when James was talking, but I guess we all know about derelict vessels, but the more you learn about it, the more crazy it is. There's a vessel sinking in West Bay right now that made me have a conversation with the Marina because it's like half sunk and it's just like, we're cleaning up butt inlet, yet we're letting things sink. Both from a human perspective, from an environmental perspective, from, and the more you go down the rabbit hole, the more there's sewage, there's just a lot of environmental and human concerns. It sounds like we don't have full capacity to manage the demolition and my understanding is very limited. But I would love to explore as a commission from a, from a service to the community and a revenue generation standpoint, because my understanding is it actually can be a moneymaker for the port. James is shaking his head. So because there are programs with DNR for us to dispose of these, so I would like to really explore leaning into that. And so Chair and Vice Chair, whenever that makes sense to program into the agenda, that seems like a real opportunity for us to as Mr. Iall's favorite term, mission versus margin. But I learned something new today. But I learned something new today. So another meeting I was in, they said enough margin that we can fulfill and support our mission. And I'm like, that's really what we're trying to say, yeah. Lastly, this is something Commissioner Savada elevated a while ago, but I'm thinking about it, Black Hills Audubon's question of whether there's another place to park for the airshow and where we had landed as far as just can we ask the question? And if there isn't another place to park, then that is that is information that we don't currently have. So that was something as a commission, just whether or not we could get a exploration of, and not a huge amount of staff time, but just is there are there any other alternatives? And if there's not, there's not, but if there is, then at least we've a, asked the question.
And along with that, if I could just the update, because I think Director Smith parsed this out, she wanted to first speak with the museum and the people who've been most closely led the airshow and then she was going to go talk to Audubon, but I don't think we've had an update recently on that.
And just given that it's typically on Father's Day and wanting to be as, as little, least disruptive to a beloved community event as possible while still doing what we can to impact the environmental impact. Getting on it now would allow us to meet both goals rather than potentially being disruptive or potentially not solving an easily solvable problem.
Don't wait till a week before the event and try and come up with an alternate. Yeah, we can be proactive on that.
Emergency.
Oh, no. Very good, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
I like the idea of solar at the marine terminal. Possibility, so I'd like to explore that RFP as well. Hopefully with the battery storage.
And if the timeline for that, the twenty-five-year investment makes it such that it doesn't make sense on the day. I'd like it to, to make sure the master plan looks at that.
And potentially the waterfront center building, because that would likely qualify, well, maybe not, maybe it's too small, but.
And the storage building too, if we're gonna RFP the storage building, it should maybe include something.
Doesn't have a roof structure then.
Do you mean the warehouse?
I meant warehouse.
That is by design a temporary structure and so the twenty-five-year timeline, I don't think.
But it's a good idea to be, to consider.
On this though, I think you asked a question earlier and it was related to the capital investment plan and I wanted to give you just a little follow-up in it regarding the marina and the boatyard. Part of the master planning effort is there will be a market analysis that's done that will evaluate how those opportunities, whether that's expansion or configuration and what kind of income generation that could potentially generate. So I wanted to mention that to you that that will come through in that process as well.
That's good to hear because I'll need that to be, to get on board.
Very good, okay.
I'm not entirely new, but the temporary warehouse budget amendment we were just talking about, that's up for this next meeting's reaction. Option Yilmas, our, our Marine Terminal Director was not here during the initial briefing for that and we've been receiving a number of emails and questions. I think people have the impression that it would be built solely for the purpose of servicing Suzano and and so I'm hoping that Option will be prepared to kind of dive a little bit deeper in the twenty-third meeting. And if he's not there for that meeting, I would like it, I'd like to push it back further.
He's gonna be there, right? He's gonna be there.
How much I speak to that?
We anticipate that Option will be back on the twenty-third.
Because for me, I'm relying very much on his own expertise and I think the, the public deserves to have a chance to kind of hear it as well.
I, I think his arrival will be, might be pretty close to that meeting and so he, that might not give him enough preparation time, so.
How would you feel since we're not canceling October fourteen? Are people comfortable moving that action to the October fourteenth meeting?
I would be.
As long as that's not impacting Options' timing. I think it already was delayed based on him being out of the office, so is, I guess that would be the caveat. If this is negatively impacting the Marine Terminal, then we'll come back to the Chair and Vice Chair about it. But I think speaking to both the multipurpose use of the warehouse as well as the commodity in general would address the public feedback.
And his reason for optimism at a time when people say, why are we investing?
I think he'll be prepared. I just want to say, I think this whole sheet and having this agenda-setting meeting is very helpful. Rain to anticipate what we're gonna talk about and when, so thanks. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair.
Great. Anything else for the good of the order?
One minor thing, I've already sent this email to some staff, but and I would love us to get on a cadence where we look at the minutes from the last meeting as part of the next meeting. When we get the packet of eight sets of minutes, it's very hard to go back. And today I was doing some reporting or administrative work and trying to look up old meetings. I think Missy's working hard and Camille on getting it updated on our website, but I think a better cadence of that, we've talked about before and said we were doing it and now it's time to do it.
If, well, I spoke with Missy about this today, what would be really helpful is we can, I, we don't want, I think most of you would like to have wetting signatures on those versus electronic signatures on the minutes. So if we can either have you sign before, before the, before the meeting starts, she can get your, your wet signature on that.
Does everyone prefer wet?
I don't have a preference.
Yeah, if electronic is easier than.
Okay, so you can't, so we can have you sign those electronically, so you can, you can review those and then we can, you can use an electronic signature versus otherwise we need you to either come a little bit early to sign or stay a little bit after to sign.
And I'm not used to minutes being signed. A lot of, most times in boards I serve on it's part of the consent agenda, basically, it's part of the packet and you approve it as part of that. Is that something we could consider instead of signing minutes?
Absolutely, I'll take a look at the resolution and ensure that there isn't any, there isn't anything precluding us from that and then that would bring some serious efficiencies to the whole thing. Yes.
Yeah, that does seem redundant, like if we're voting on it and signing it. Or on minutes, it's like
Sign resolutions.
Right, 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 but.
Okay, very good, yeah, I'm, we're, I'm happy to we're putting them through to the consent agenda and then you're also going back and putting a wet signature on it and that's, yeah, it's.
However, staff, I agree that the cadence is the highest priority, so however, it makes the most sense for staff. So that it's the last meeting at the next meeting.
You could take note from some of our fellow ports who have streamlined their processes to try and reduce the number of touches on things so that they can run their meetings efficiently, so I think we're looking at that now, so this is the perfect time. Time for that, thank you.
May I, permission for one more thing? Did you know the Rutledge Corn Maze is a port tenant? I just wanted everyone to know we're moving into Rutledge Corn Maze season. I think I knew that.
I didn't know that until the tenant. They are a hap, they are a happy bunch there.
Connection, okay, cool. So if anyone wants to meet me down there.
I like it. I like it.
Well, thank you so much, commissioners. Appreciate your time. You, on your convert, this is, this is super helpful on staff end too. So thank you.
Thank you. Ooh, and one meetings are shorter.